The support staff, as well as the traditional leaders present, the mayor in charge of where we are, and everyone who is present. Good morning on this day.
Koyo. Kuba sebenzi abakasagale komitee, kuso tulupu kua petele tulupsiguyo, kuingo krieliso mthwanya ma, kuyoyonge umdotewazi na wala pralani mina namchane siani kudis.
Kuyomoro, ons is a komitee from the parliament where mineral and energy. And ons is here om jale to to speak over wetzonwerb. And ons will jale grah allmaal gurut wat vandag here angekommen. Danking.
On my far left, we have Honorable Bilangulu.
Kasekhodzo snoba ombilangulu.
On my far right is Achbare Bilankulu.
Next to him, we have Honorable Madokwe.
Ekalen kwake spen nochon pekle yo umama Madokwe.
Langsum is Achbare Madokwe.
Next to Honorable Madokwe, we have got Honorable Lekov.
Ekalkoma umadokwe spen umnumza lindho.
Langs Achbare Madokwe is Achbare Legov.
On my right, we have Honorable Volmarans.
Kasekunene kwams nochon pekle yo umnumza nubel Volmarans.
On my right is Achbare Volmarans.
Next to him, we have Honorable Malinga.
Ekalen kwake ben nochon pekle yo Malinga.
Achbare Malinga sit Langsum.
Next to her, we have got Honorable Javta.
Ekalkoma Malinga spen nochon pekle yo Javta.
Langsara is Achbare Javta.
Next to him, we have Honorable Lorima.
Ekalkwa keben nochon pekle yo Lorima.
And Achbare Lorima is Langsum.
I am Mr. Luzipo, the Chairperson of the Portfolio Committee on Mineral Resources and Energy.
Ngenke otetaya oni umnumza nuluzipo uskalwe komitee yezimbiwa nemethombo yesamane.
Ike is Achbare Luzipo and Ike is the Vorsetter from the committee over mineral holbrone and energy.
We are from the Portfolio Committee on Mineral Resources and Energy in the National Assembly.
Si sukakiko komitee ke yezantelo le yezimbiwa nemethombo yesamane pa yakengue yo isomte tu eseezwe in National Assembly.
ons is the Portefiliya Committee in the National Assembly and ons is the Portefiliya Committee over mineral holbrone and energy.
We are here instructed by Parliament through a deal that is being proposed by the Department of Mineral Resources and Energy.
Si laba kuguyale loi i Parliament ngamanyama zusituya i Parliament go kumte tu oyeyelua yo ofela pa kusebe yezimbiwa nemethombo yesamane.
Parliament had ons odrage here om medhi wetzonwerb orionbikling van strom op petroleum holbrone met i te kom besprek.
So as a committee, we took a decision that before we deliberate on the deal or proposed deal, we must go and hear what are the views of our community.
Sena le komitee ke strategist kubosokma pam kubatina si samashongwa nelomte tu yelua yo masika le sisi kubakali sive yezimbozabo abano shkrobisa ngazo okuti masisi kola selokanya sisi somela ke kulumte tu yelua yo kupa mkuwe.
ons hepa as komitee beslait vorhat ons here di wetzonwerb besprek tisen ons dat ons na di gemeenskap na di saïtafrikaners to gaan kom en hale di geleintheid te ge om insa te ge over here di wetzonwerb.
So we are here to listen or to hear your views on what is your what is your take on the proposed legislation which is still in the form of a deal.
Ucho okuti ke sise apa ngokuzo umamela kuni kubani na ningaspebe sa netini na kuka lomte tu si uyelua yo uze shukuto velakay kusebe yezimbiwa nemethombo yesamane.
Over here di voorgestelde wet wat in di form of a wetzonwerb obi omblik is het ons te beslait ons gaan na i kom om te war wat i menung is en wat de insite i kan lever over here di wetzonwerb.
Only when we have finished all the nine provinces, we will then have a deliberation on the issues that would have received from yourselves, but also on what is being proposed as the deal. It is only after we have finalized the public hearing that we will deliberate on the proposed deal as a committee.
Enfin, kubase sile kwa onge ama pond olithoba ellizwe samamela yezimbozabo antunes debaspebe sa zona kungo koke sa utitina sile komitee skali skali panzi si otla kengo kunges pakamiso esvelakusebe si kola selenenge biso enitenas krobisa ngazo sa ukalange la otla saketina ke utetake ngalomte tu oyelua yupa mkuwe.
As komitee, sal ons erst over here di wetzonwerb praat and beratslag nadat ons al nege provinces besooket and al nege provinces hale insa ge leveret over here di wetzonwerb and dit gaan deel van ons bespreking wes na ons al di provinces besooket.
Western Cave is our first province and you are the last leg of the Western Cave. We have already done two areas in the Western Cave. This is our last leg that we will be having public hearing.
Incho nakulo ni ke lipondo lokala esitese zakulo kenkes ngokozinje namaluwa na lomte tu ninake ni yidulupi okubela esitese zakuyo kubase sile kwezinye yezimbi ni baskrobisa ke ngenge biso wasnegazona ninake ni yekubela ela pa ke Western Cave yidulupesuma melaku.
ons hepa afgeskoop medhi westkaup and here is the laste gedeelte van i westkaup wat ons besook want ons hepa alreets twe plekken in i westkaup besook over here di wetzonwerb.
So we will urge and plead with you to feel free to tell us what do you think about the proposals contained on the deal.
Siani kenga kesini bongoza okuti ni kululeke ni tetengokulekle yo nicho okuti ni na ni kenga ndoni na kenkes nebiso zalomte tu oyelua yo ofela kusebe nicho okuti ni na ni kibisa ndoni na.
ons will hee dat jale allmaal freemetu om jale menung stelh and for ons precies te say wat jale dink over here di voorgestelde wetgeving.
Lastly, you have a right, a full right to reject or support the proposals contained on the deal, but will appreciate at least to give us the basis of rejecting or the basis of supporting so that we can also be empowered as members of Parliament.
Okubela ke ni kumbul okuti ke ninelunge lo okuti ke ekben ismamela ke esis pakamiso zivela kusebe nicho okuti niyazamkeelana okanya nyazipiki sa kodake sialuwa na okuti kameziti uyakasa kanyu uyazamkeela okanya ipiki sa magaskrobise ke nageziza tu zo koseso stobo astata isokuti wa uyapiki sa uyapiki sa kenkes izatunesi wa uyakasa utasa kenkes izisla.
Dit is jale voler rech om here di voorgestelde wetgeving of taan paar of te verwerf. Al wat ons van jale al verlang obi jale dit nowan paar of verwerf is om jale redes te ge and specific te noom waar over jale ontevrede is of tevrede is so that jale ons o kan bemachtach as ons feider over here di wetzonwerb later gaan beratslag.
So I'm going to give my colleague, Honorable Volmarans, to just give an overview of what is contained or is being proposed on the deal.
Disa unike zela ke kutawam nochon pekle ka Volmarans olapetalen kwam kuba kwa lapa kati koe tu kuba magaskrobiso okuti ke esis pakamiso zivela kusebe zitini na.
Ike my kollege Achbare Volmarans di geleintheid ge om net an jale te verdeilig wa over here di wetgeving gaan wat di veranderings is wat voorgestel word in di wetgeving an jale voortou.
I just got an emergency call was some years so I need to just go out and attend to that and but I'll still be around for the duration of the meeting.
Kukonsinga kana endi vilele feneke balake ndwa yo oyanga lomso so kodake zobendikwa nake apen kanga so.
Ike het ein noet oproep gekruis so hee gaan net go na dit gaan omzin ik sal hier wes and ik sal weer terugkom om na ite leisten.
Good morning, good morning everybody.
Potani, potani onge.
Gruutani allmaal.
As the Chairperson has already outlined some of the issues under discussion, I would immediately go towards explaining or exploring what the Upstream Petroleum Resources Development Bill is and is not.
Jenoko uskalo kesele es kapazele es nyeninkalo es malungano kuba okuetu apa disa onge na ke mnake mkholininza undi kaito sukuti ke lomte tu shkomele osi zenga ona mchane utetaa utini na okanya ulachendoni na.
Om dat die Vorsetter alreets sekere van i dange angeraket wat ons over gaan praat gaan ik onmiddelik over om an i te verdeilig wa over here di wetzonwerb or di unvikling van strom op petroleum holbrone gaan and wat hier in vervat is.
Currently, we have an Act of 2002 which discusses minerals and petroleum resources development.
Kugusetange nasenau umte tu ka 2002 obi songo ba ke Mineral and Petroleum Resources Development Act ngamanyama zuge ngomte tu ongo puthesole nemethombo yemine petrola ni kunye ne yezimbiwa oka 2002.
Obi omblik het ons wet 28/2022 and dit is een wet op di unvikling van mineral and petroleum holbrone. Yeen wet.
The department then proposes that we separate the petroleum from the minerals so that they become independent of each other.
Isabe ke likabisu okuti sosula shule yeminerals ngamanyama zuzimbiwa ezombim kuchini sizo shule ke kui petroleum kunye nekes.
What the department do is halovo yirdi twe elemente van makarskae halovo di mineral di mineral holbrones kayi van petroleum holbrone and dit is waarum hale met here di nive wetzonwerb kom wat specific gaan over di petroleum holbrone.
So as a result of that submission, we have the Petroleum Resources Development Bill which we are going to discuss and it might ultimately become an act after our participation.
Kungo koke sien sesi umte tu obi songo ba ke luputhesole nemethombo yep petroleum esizo uti ke kases kubebes ngokozonke si kaso punyeswe wa umte tu uyagobisake ngelo kam.
Dit is waarum ons nou met here di voorgestelde wetzonwerb obi unvikling van strom op petroleum holbroneset.
It is therefore important before we go through with the bill in our different discussions at Parliament, we hear from the community, we hear from the affected people, we hear from interested organizations and people, we hear generally what the views are and what you would want to see happening in that bill.
Kungo koke kwalike lokuji tina ke Parliament pam kubasi kuma kela otsuka chukene yo si kasi samashongwa ne esis pakamiso zivela kusebe kuba luleki lokuji mashkale si pulapule okuti abaxali abemibelise bo na batini na kenkes espakamiso zivela kusebe pam kubatinasi ambe so kalt.
Vorhat ons begin met di bespreking van here di wetzonwerb in di komitee het ons beslait ons kom na di gemeenskap belanghebendes organisaties wat i dir geraag word di di wetgeving geraag word ons kom na jale toe and ons wil grah over wat jale te say here over and nadat ons jale insite gekrei het gaan ons weer terug so sile ge said na di nege provinces and dann doen ons ons beratslag over here di wetzonwerb.
So the bill is not a project. There is no project that we are talking about or a construction or anything to do with an actual physical project on the ground. It's about getting insights from yourselves and us hearing and listening so that it can inform us when we discuss about how we must go about our resources.
Utukuti ke lomte tu oyelua yo awyo project okanya awetu kutukukuy project ezoko beke kaai kungo kubanjekar ngomte tu funegusheli ulungselim xakua kutikwe ina kenkes jengeso ma kusake nsejane ngazo kungo kwekwalike lokuji kasi shelitini Parliament si kaltan ngazo espakamiso zivela kusebe sibe sijkola selene biso zinu enisni ke zona okwenzel bi kwanilje la sibe nenje la yo zifakana zo ke lomte tu kaso punyes.
So here di wetzonwerb is nie project wat binekort gaan plasvent of enige iets nie. Dit is voorgestelde wet. Voorgestelde wetgeving betekn leversay and dit is waarum ons na jale to kom om jale inzichte here over te kreis so that ons later dit kan besprek and as dit nodig is sekere veranderings an here di wetgeving anbrim.
And lastly, there are a number of issues that are in the bill. Firstly, the second one because the first one we have already discussed now. The second one relates to the state's participation with regard to the bill and ultimately the act. How the state is going to participate fully with regard to being the custodian of our resources.
Ina kula kala sesidule kula lsb niliti ohkulu mendena ye kufuneke etate ngakreba kushishino le petroleum kano tilkobeke ka kanya kalukobeke ka nokuti kainke nela ohkulu mendita etate ngakreba utata ngakrebanjane na kolo shishino ke nokwenza ne petroleum.
Di tweede punt wat ik hier wil eitleh gaan over wat di regering di staatse deelnamie gaan wes in here di wetzonwerb natierlik as dit wetgeving word and dit is dat di staat as bewaarder sal optre van di landse holbrone ali landse holbrone and dit is waarover dit here gaan di rol wat di staat gaan speel.
It also discusses how by definition black people generally are going to be participating along the side of this bill and or the act when it comes into effect down the line.
Kua kona ke kwe kasele nengakisosa konya kaito sukuti abandu abansu basu etate ngakrebanjane kake lomte tu yelua yo se to aban ngomte tu okanya ngelke shao usa kubayo usa yelua ujalo.
Dit gaan ook over insleiding van soort mensen in here di wetzonwerb and as dit wetgeving word wat de rol hale hier in gaan speel. Specific gaan dit ook daar ware.
The bill discusses how you as a person or a company is going to participate in as far as the application for some of the licenses that will come out in future are concerned.
Lomte tu oyelua yo uyakaito sukuti kawe na njungu mdu okanya ngombu okanya shishini ofunu etate ngakreba ke kolo shishino uza utata ngakrebanjane na epindi ma ofune kuitalile kaufaka isikelo so fumanana ipepamfume zone na kulu shishin.
Dit gaan ook over de rol wat i gaan speel vooral als dit kom bij di uitreking van licenties wa dit here di wetzonwerb and as dit wetgeving word wat de rol hier in gaan speel.
It talks about how exploration is envisaged to take place and your participation in as far as that exploration if ever it happens and how it becomes accelerated. It talks about the exploration and the production of this asset.
Kua konya kaito sukuti sholo lue akwenzo anjanina kake kusenzeka esishino loba mdu efuna ukangeela okutanga fumanana esimbiwa kanya le petroleum kunyda wetile olasholo luezoayo nokuti kai fumanekiile uza isa ovini swanjanina kulo ndau ite apa kaka kuyo uyakaito sakelo ndoke lomte tu oyelua yo si yamba nao.
Dit nuwok specific wat de rol i gaan speel en verkennen. Specific di bespooding di bespooding van verkennen en produksi van ons holbrone.
And finally, it also deals with how you get affected or disaffected if it happens in future that we go in that route.
Kua kona uyaketa lomte tu oyelua yo ke nake okuti ke we na ukapazelanjane kubanga uyakapazela lo olo shishino luzo kobeke ka malunga ke petroleum kunye nekes kondo ke ukala kuyo luso kapazelanjane na.
Dit praat ook specific over hoe dit jale gaan raag of dit jale positief of negativ gaan raag in di toekomst vooral als here di voorgestelde wetgeving wet word.
So the environment is also a topic that is in here. However, now that we are at the point where we have a background of what the bill seeks to say, it is for that reason where we want you to talk to us about what you would want to see if you supported the bill, what you would want to see if you don't support the bill. We are not coming with an opinion. We are here to get from you what you want to see if you support, if you don't support and how it affects you. So that when we discuss in Parliament and we discuss all these issues, your inputs should have been taken care of and be discussed as well.
Ngokunsakely ke nenda lo esngongile yo na yo ikona apa ukusela kula yo ke kulumte tu oyelua si upeteh kungo koke kwalike lokuji ni sibokisukuti kubanga bamchlaambi ni lomte tu uyagunyeswa nina ninuwa na ukubona mdu ni na ofuneke zifaki we kulumte tu okanya ukubanga bamchambi lomte tu kwenze kuskapazelanjane zile zile singone lukubonukuti tina sikuselu ngalentela ngalentela indalo esngongile yo kubaba ni bonukuti ngalo lomte tu utitino ukusela kula yo ni kibisu okuti ngolukuti ke ma wenzema ma kwenzo indoni na kunsesu utindalo esngongile ya kusela ka zonge zo ngabiso singe bisesili nde lukuti sifumanen kuni asisi apa sesine sikwe bo soba kufuneke kwenze indoni na sizo ukangeela is di imponeni biso zinu kuba ni funa lomte tu ibe indoni ekulungwa efakela yo kuyo okanya ni funukuti ma ukangeleke ujane na ukuse ube uyamkele ka kuni kanwa ngawa amke kandubaba niyawa amke la ni kobisukuti mchambi ni keta konge konge zulena naleena leya zonge zo sifuneke sifumene kuni namchane.
Di wetgeving slait natierlik ook di beskerming van i omgeving in. Ik will hee di stance por eitleh dat ons as komitee gene penny het over here di wetgeving nie. Dit is waarum ons na i to kom so that i insite kan lever. So as i of i insite gaan over di vey dat i nie here di wetgeving gaan onersteen i of dat i dit gaan onersteen of as da positive of negative dange in here di wetgeving bevat is dan moet i dit asse bliv noom. I insite sal ons help as ons sit and kijk na here di wetgeving and zien hoe ons enige veranderings gaan anbrim of wat de insite ons gaan lever over here di wetgeving. Dit is bae belangrit. As i sterkt daarteen vo of er vo dat di redes ge waarom i so vo and sekere voorstellen maak as i enige veranderinge will hee. Danking.
So we are going to start by having ten people and they will be sitting along these chairs or on these chairs. There are one up to ten and each one who raises his hand will give him or her a number which is commensurate with the chairs so that they can have a word with us. You are allowed to speak[1488.16] you are allowed to speak in the language of your choice we do have interpreters as you already see who would be in a position to relate what you are saying to the general public and especially to ourselves to take home so we are at the point where we can start discussing and don't be afraid you can speak your mind the only thing that you will request is that you must be very very sensitive to time would give you to a maximum of four five minutes per person if you talk one minute we are not going to crucify you but we might crucify you if you talk seven minutes the other part is we see that the hall has got a lot of people who would want to speak on issues other people would want to write and they can also give to the table across where the such submissions can be recorded lastly there are people it's a sunday there are people who like to talk they might come from a background of church who like to preach the disadvantage is some of them they talk for a long time and after they have made their point they take their bag and go out and the few who did not raise that point are left to discuss the point of somebody who has gone so just be sensitive of that so that we can all participate and come out of this meeting in a way according to how we started
gogosefekyo kichuwa lobake sini geze ituwa ke kuni apa pakatin bo la knesdu loes koyo apes lele komkolo sizo opa tela bandu abanishumebuka labafunu kwenzi kalelo bafunu kromla bapakamse sandla ka opa kamse sandla ke uyewuneki numberlo kutwe wenumsekelu ng number one ng number two umduku ya ubanga ng number one ya kustulo sokalbu ng number two ya kwestesbi ni jalonjalon keni numbera onigwe yonake ka ukonjiwe sika la kua kona sikuumbulu ukuti ikwalele olunga bandu bafunu kwenzi kalelo nabo ka uteta use ukumbulu ukutu sekos omnyasafunegesifumene ikkaesha na ilo uteta singa keli lika shalabo umdu samnega imizuzu milchanu ubuti koto agesenga chukuti ka utetomzuzu omnye sizo akolwa yanga londo koto butetimizuzu skaino ukunsakle funegeskolwaile ng londo saya zukunge ikawa namklaasje abanyabantu bakalbasesunkozweni ngelkaesha baba bayashumayela omnye umdutige kasele tetapai ekongeni anyukwelu gumoya azboni sese sumayesa alibale kuse kabanya bandu funegesitil nati ka ikubulu uteti indu sismanga atatvumikodwa na yake apume omnyango ye na utreba ashie ababantu ke ikka shalabo benga benga kange bako zutet kua kona abanantu abangalfuma ni ituwa le uteta umdu nakupala pansi sizo ingabiso sake ayos nigeza lapaita fleni kwe la kalalpaita leni kwenze le sithatule ngalelo nobaka fuma na ituwa le uteta koto agesu nakupala pansi yonengeza paita fleni ingabiso sakwa sika la kesesebe sese sani ngolo shobo ukuleki ile vulentliso ya kuchetela dinga pakati koe ukutu skabisan toni nama lunga la lomteeto uyeloay ons kom nou na die rede voor hier die openbare veroor en dit is jille geleentheid om jille inzette te lever hoe dit gaan gebeuren is die voorzitter gaan vraag diegene wat bije graag een inzet te lever om jille handen in die lichaam te steek en dan gaan hij een nummer voor jille toe teeken op aan teken en dit werk volgens die stoelen wat hier in die middel in die rij is so dat gaan van één tot tien wees so as i nummer één is ons zit hier jill vier as i nummer tien is ons zit hier daa jill achte die tweede punt wat ons bije graag wil maak i spreekt weer beloop vijf minuten as dit voor één minuut is is dit heel te mal in die haak maar as nie meer is vijf minuten praat dan gaan het een beke van een probleem wees ons weet dat het vandaag zondag is en natuurlijk is die meeste van jille in die kerker op een zondag so van jilles al wel praat houd het maar voor beke later asseblief die volgende punt is diegene wat voor gescrevee voorlegging zet wat nie wil kompraten nie of kompraten maar nog steeds die voorlegging wat i het oor hier die wetgeving wil inlever aan die bij die tafel daa jill aan mijn rechterkant zit daa dames in hiere en hale zal jille gescrevee voorleggings inneem ons gaan nou beginnen met die vergadering
we can raise our hands so that you can be identified
jill kan jille handen maar in jille lichaam steek om identificeer te word
we will have the gentleman here number one two the lady number two
the lady is number two
number three the gentleman with the cap red 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 t-shirt the lady with the glasses at the back is it the lady sorry for yes yes ma'am we are doing a geographic spread the gentleman with the crown so it's five from this side I we are coming through we would I would have preferred for the leadership of the community to come last you know so that we yeah so that would be a preference and then I will make a consideration for that so the gentleman in the yes 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 sir and let me have the lady in the middle there yes the gentleman with the tie are we fine oh one left the lady with the white yes now don't despair depending on how they control the time we are also going to get into the second rounds where we would accommodate everybody's view if that is in order with you the time the time is now yours for the community to speak to us
eh if if it's a to dimegulinda ou di ogokala mandenge inje lomteeto ukulungwayo di ya usapota mna kakulu ngakumbi kana usiniga ilungeno logo guva masikua zuteta yarisossi zetu esinazo ogokuba basipathwenjani na yati ngakegulinda ondimeguyo yavaku mu kukubaleka ukuti i risossi esi esipuma kumsaba wetu apes South Africa ube pansi kuisanja skakulmen dego pelele kwenze la indo kwenze la indo ube kulau lo na kundi masa makabiso ubasi akape la go guama kabiso e petrole abaleka ngapa ya kwa mantra wetu we mani esnow koto akalondo ipetwen kulkumende en amansapenele yavazu lauleka esi kuesinjani oguesibini yakonda ogokubanjengoo kuesinbiwa sipuma apa emsabewetu kuxiega umsaba wetu kenke ingaske i percentage yayo yonge yavabantu ba investorme kuesinbiwa esinazo ab sixiege is enza bandu balapem emsabep ipile kua kono kuestatu ni itin ikongonza ni kela ogokuba kupkini sekiswe indo yoku guva ukushala kwe tu kukuchane apes indo zenseka kona kuxiega ukuchisa abantu abakuchane kuesinjani nezinyeke ituru ndiakonda ne ukivela emsali ngapambie indo esistelo so ogokuba unyanze liso noba esizi indo zingenzeki ngapande olwas do abatsali aban eh dien al kaza ikamalam gummutuzelimgooma the we business forum etemaleto
my name is Mthutuzelimgooma from Temaleto Business Forum greeting to the chairperson and the members of parliament that accompany the chairperson and the community at large firstly I want to support this bill as you indicated what the benefits for us are there in this bill and you also indicated to us that the intention of the bill is to indicate to us as to how do we handle the resources that are in our hands and furthermore it's also informative that this bill indicates to us the state should take control of this business of the resources that is in our land so that is my proposal that the state must be in control of what is in our country furthermore we also wish the state to also take control of the prices and the way how prices are being regulated as you can see the petrol prices are flying day in day out and the other point that I want to raise is that the businesses that are taking place in our land or the minerals that are taken away from our land must benefit us as the people who are staying in that land they should not leave us empty handed at least there must be some kind of flow back to the community that is occupying that pieces of land a certain percentage of what they have taken out of our land must be flow back to the community as I indicated my name is Mthutuzelim eh that is the input that I want to make
good morning Chair and the committee thank you so much for this opportunity to provide input I have two issues the one is I support the previous speaker that the state should be in control of its assets and its resources and that the community are the ones who should benefit we've got a situation in Mozambique where only two percent of all the petrol and gas that's extracted there goes back to the state ninety eight percent goes to the petroleum companies but the two points that I want to add on to the previous speaker the one is I just went through this very quickly what worries me is for thirteen says it will be an open licensing system with no clear criteria or predefined criteria and linked to that the minister I see I'm just glancing through this very quickly the minister has a blank check for this board we're giving him a blank check to decide how to award rights and if we end up with a good minister that's fantastic but if we end up with Gwedi Mantashie then like he had for Sasa to pay for his security fencing and that still hasn't come hasn't been inspected that's what worries me the other aspect which really worries me is the western Cape depends a lot on tourism but I noticed that the environmental part of this whole board has been ignored the people that have been consulted are all petrol companies petrol agencies but not a single environmental agency and not even the environmental affairs department we have a whole lot of reports of whales and dolphins and seals beaching on the beaches of the Garden Route recently because total energy was busy with seismic blasting of Mossul Bay and this will destroy our tourism industry and will destroy a lot of real jobs
amas kaise kurre kai kankans
just just a sec the I don't know whether I missed it the lady did not give her name so I would request everybody with respect just to give us their particular the name or introduce yourself so that we can note it there goes the lady can just give the name so that we don't miss it out sorry sorry sir
sorry Chair I'm Muriel Ho-Yun from the Deune Veldkuss Vereniging and we este vak fonteen bewaarjel
ik is paramount chief doctor Neville Korkia van die Bakiti koi in Garden Route ik wil vraag word een wat er hoekie die government besluit oor die goed om ons als eerste nation se goed aan de besluiten te maak het al ons in agenneem hale kom op goed et daaf vanaf i was in de hoekede hale dit bespreek en hale expect net ons moet die goed aanvaar is onaanvaarbaar voor ons als eerste nation ik zeg nou gaan terug naar Saramaposa toe en die delegatie gaan servale hale moet eerst ons acknowledge en om die tafel met ons kom sit en dan gaan ons dan besluit wat met jou in onze environment gaan gebeuren weet i hoekom gebeuris op bije aardbevings en goed en tsunamis is een gevolg van boer ons roo die environment dan moet dan moet daar oorstromers en goed kom ons is hier pertje vat niege jaar om te rooien het hale dat in agenneem alwa hale sien is moe la is geld wat van ons in nageslaag ons het een nageslaag wat ons hier goed te moet zien ik wil i ons het kunnen voor die goed sien op een boek of op een tv of op een video nie hale moet die goed gaan inskoop zo maydan is die stikli die jille proces stop tot hale jille terugkom naar die koi en is aan die eerste nation en as jille vel voor het gaan gaan ek persoonlijk sorgen dat ons jille gaan hoofd opvat en hina jille korrap de hoofd nie maar dena die taties in jille hoofd too is een deitlik serva Saramaposa paramount chief doctor Neville Korkia here for me mandat om alles te stop Gwedi Mantashie moet stoppati miette doen is amas hey
all right your point is taken is valid I just appreciate not you taking over the meeting but I understand oh the lady is not a speaker from the queue she's interpreting so you did not see that right
good day Chairperson my name is Neville Korkia I'm a paramount chief of our koi tribe I would like to ask in what corner did government decide about using our nation the first nation's possessions and just expect us to accept whatever government wants to do with these possessions in our coastlines you need to go back to Mr Ramaposa and tell him that he needs to come and sit around the table with us the first nation to decide about what is going to be done with our environment and our coastline and the nature of our people do you know why the environment or the earthquakes and tsunamis are happening in our areas it is because of drilling the government only sees money they do not care about the environment they do not care about our future generations this process needs to be stopped immediately and the government needs to come back to us the first nation and firstly discuss what needs to be done before proposing bills without consulting us as this paramount chief will personally take parliament or the ministry to the traditional court to the traditional court to stop this process it cannot continue Mr Ramaposa and Mr Mantashie need to be stopped it has to come to the traditional council and the traditional leaders first we cannot be accepted to just accept things without being consulted
Speaker hello um my name is Buyo from Watleva in Temaleto um can I speak now um about the bill um I want to ask I want to be elaborated about the ten percent participation of let people is it going to be possible or is just gonna be there as a law is it going to be there as a legal or how it's going to be is going to be possible that's what I want is it going to be a mask or is just gonna be there as a ten percent and the other thing that I want to ask is why the bill is so quiet about the community participation the youth that's the thing that I want to ask and the last question is why this can't be a hundred percent state owned project that's all thank you
let's not forget the names
ik voel de nagegom om dat ons eerste nation
Ek voel de nagekom om dat ons eerste nation laatste ek ken boe. Zo hierin moet eerst teruggaan. Zo dat die ons eerste nation eerste ken beet, dat die presentatie, dat hoe kom swart mete? Wie staan het uit rakkel of ze ek verkeerd? Wie staat swart presentatie? En waar ken ons aan hoor? Als ons laatste op die vlaier? Dat is al wat ek zeg. Die praatet, zegen, ons te laten blief eerste gekbiet. Voor ons gaan en stem op die stage.
G'day, uh, committee. My name is Christina Willemser. I would like to bring your attention to clause 31, which mentions 10% participation. This clause is worrisome. I really feel that it is necessary for the, or it also refers that this needs to be referred to the Council of Traditional Leaders, but it makes no mention of the koi people and the koi council. We, we have not even been consulted yet, but now the committee comes and expects us to say whether we agree or disagree with the bill. As plain community members, but our, our traditional leadership has not been consulted. As a member of the First Nation, we feel betrayed and we really advise that this be sent back to the Parliament and that they need to first consult with the First Nation leaders and show us where we fit in. Because it also only makes mention of black people. Where do we as the koi people fit in as the First Nation? We please ask that you consult our traditional leadership first and explain where we fit in and make part of this bill.
Amanta. Awe du. Mayu ye. Afrika. Thank you, uh, Tanga Pangu, Chairperson. Next, I passa. Ulele community, ya napai Southend Cape, iba ilapa. Ika amma, Santi Lema Seiko lo keeta yo. Op Pumalung organization, try to create a community, eh, Emosil Bay, stakeholder leadership, Emosil Bay. Eh, mani kade glenda hau, singokei. Ko ba ke uko abandon babonai baba mele, eh, eh, leadership, eh, eh, royal families. After hundred years ago, eh, sa susua emiltabi our forefathers out of a land, sa zobequa, emiltaba kama spali around, eh, in South Africa. Eh, sa teben ba sisusi, webe susi obao, sa beba wesda, sa pumalunese, lo pumaluneselelo ninsi. Tifunuti, in the House of Ukinku, shifunika, eh, ngubenguka, eh, sa lwa amada, alitho obao obao. In the battlefield, olitho obalo amada, azange so iiswe, sizo samakos, in the battlefield, kangasbe etwe. Asna wimba le, pisabe, sa swanzu liswa, ngabe zezu, utukutama ke is, ngoboba obalo eka pulu namake is. Especially the house kaniika, with sizo, zika, zika kautaka, duduka, pano, kachoga, inza, kateka, kahaka. Kamakoma, kasana. Eh, asbe twanga, gezozitsu. Umslabo obuyelanga, kuti, tinabandu beba ulwela, ebandwi. Sirotzwe, zimfunmani, kwakunyino so politik. Ba teka be tetanga namata bi obao, alitho ba, ka be bizanga makamislugu, ba tizi frontier wars, just because of i enemi, they never defeat our forefathers. Ba teka denza, i museum, koma Robben Island, where be kukokona, bestuneze lo konna. Ba teka be tetaa, gesele, zotada, u doctor Robert, eh, Nelson Mandela, Robert, sorry, Robert Obukwe. Nbe ne selasaka, ipaga niswe yakinda. Ipaga niswe kamakoma indaba. Sen ba inesa kisse libi ngumuni, ebeklele nguni. Kulungi leka, osso politik, after 1994, beka kangbe, bawakanga anye, amatabi obao. Ba ti magka, lekule, ekanadin thirteen, hundred years ago. Tifunutaka salonda, wakalata. This eh, kulumba ka Pedro, eh, Petroliam. I Petroliam is affected ka kule Emosil Bay. Si fmeni itisiz, eh, nesi for Petro SA, in this finale TP, is too much pagu temosil bay. It TP, it sinus, it zikulu, gezikulu, esenzwa, limolusai godomoya, which is autos, eh, atmosphere, o Petro SA, kangas sizo, zen toku ye, all those years, si Emosil Bay. Eh, the Southern Cape is whole. Sen basila pa Parliament, si kela ba nisenzeli feiva, genyemini, niganizzi su Petro SA, elundui. O funua nga bandu ba se Emosil Bay, Petro SA, akavumusa, ekwe ebandwi. O sebenza, some of individuals forums, sizo ba ipad, abatis stakeholder community forum, sa ke o Petro SA, no des electo e community. Si ek telela ke londo, nikua la sele, Parliament, ko ba ke uyazenzela, yongele minyak, abandaba kamle layo e Petro SA. Ngabantu, abakwa, bala pe kaya, kotoa, neti Southern Cape, ku kamle in Pumalanga, kwakamle sekyunda, kwakamle tepen, kwakamle zope, kwakamle Cape Town. Di kela ra ngoki, officie, tunjenbi planti pagu temosil bay. Office is a Cape Town, what is that? A Cape Town is hundred kilos away from the plant, is not, cause befa ma, the Southern Cape is whole, ya kamla, including osote ko Emosil Bay. So ngama fuchane, ngokeli, nizo uchanga, nizo uchla, uchla ngapambi. Si ek telela ke manu sizi selo Petro SA community samlindi, when the i, i, i rule and divide amongst the communities. Ko enda, be ku kabaantu, eh, Emosil Bay, ababis ba si end commerce, kaisi teleki sa, which is not right, Africa for the African, those home and those still abroad. Eh, we as a communities, what do you want? We want only five things, then I will step down. One, let the hungry be fed. Naked be clothed. The sick be nourished. The aged protected and the infert cared for. That's only the things that we need here as a community of Emosil Bay and the Southern Cape. We don't want anything. And also, si bone from, from i portfolio committee, eh, Parliament, obuguya from last year, October. And, and, and between October and, 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 and November, you are there to us in Emosil Bay. Eh, si resolver, how can we work and, 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 and live together amongst us, eh, eh, Petro SA and the total case and the community? But the stakeholder that is not appointed in the entire community, you are not stand for them, cause it's the stakeholder community forum of Petro SA, not of the entire community of Emosil Bay and the Southern Cape is whole. So, we, we, after you come there, you resolve the problem, wa si teleki sa, o Petro SA, si community. I case ye tu, esai fakayo during 2016 and 2017, ibi anda i hawks, lojewe maleka Petro SA. Si ek teela Parliament, ngeni paga nis, cause low case, ka 2016 and 2017, why tenka o Petro SA? Ko bundesasim, afrande oba, a, a, abemu ye ku youth, eh, 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 i konna ye tu, eh, ku youth, eh, twice, banya youth. Eh, ipa, eh, sati ma ke, unke ni youth, iti take over to control, why tenka? One of them, one ne gusebenzu, wenga esho, under us all. And there's no single here, there to Emosil Bay and the Southern Cape, ebeku committee, porti, officin, abandu ba se Emosil Bay, cause of man gusebenza Petro SA. Ungu mama, bekufneka, ulale, ne management, za pa. Bangaba, ungumuti, ungutata, bekufneka, obu ye, obatala, istrestila, si afyamale, until iti tubelti, which is in this time, as if unezondo, si pinda zenzel, gamchala ngapambi. Obas si sele, into S, S, Senzwa, o Petro SA, cause even ku management, ya ke office management. There's no single indivi, eh, 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 single people wa napai Emosil Bay or Southern Cape, ebeku pad, eh, management, eh, Petro SA. All over them, they come outside in, in the Southern Cape, of, 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 eh, Western Cape. So, di zamuti gamchan ngapambi, si nezo muale, si selele yo, kaniske teleleni Parliament. I thank you.
I am Santi Lema Seiko from Beta Community Stakeholder Forum in Emosil Bay. I thank the Chairperson and your committee at large, as well as the community members. Eh, there's also a royal family that I've noticed here today and that triggered something to me. That after hundred years ago, that we've been removed, forcefully removed from our lands. We've been involved in different kinds of fire, of battles, starting from King Ngerika, Ngubenguka, you name them. And all those battles, we never lost a single one of them. And as a result, they named them the frontier wars, but they run away from the fact that we never lost. And then when the land was restored, it was never restored to us as the people who previously owned those pieces of land. We were cheated by the academics and the politicians. They took over the land and restored the land to, only for them. And furthermore, even if you can see what happened to Robben Island when it was turned into a museum. You will get the names of Subuukwe and others, but you don't see the name of Ngerika, who was also one of the heroes who was in Robben Island. And furthermore, the, the issue of Petroliam, we, the people of Emosil Bay, it affected us negatively a lot. The community there suffered a lot from the airborne disease, different kind of airborne disease, sinus, chest and whatever, asthma, you name them. So Petro SA does not bring any favor to us as the, as the community. And furthermore, I want to ask you, Parliament, to please do us a big favor. Please bring Petro SA to us as the community members of Emosil Bay. We really need to see or to sit in with them to deal with Petro SA. Petro SA will form a forum which is supposed to be stakeholder, community forums, that kind of a forum. But that forum is only established in terms of Petro SA. The community is not involved at all in that kind of a forum. And yet that forum is expected to be working for the locals of, for the people of Emosil Bay. Eh, the people who benefit from Petro SA is only people from afar, like people from Pumalanga, Sekunda, Cape Town, Khouteng and the rest. And even the head office of Petro SA is not in Emosil Bay. The head office is in Cape Town. How can you see, where, where have you seen such a thing? There's nothing that benefits the locals that is being done by Petro SA. And there were five things that we need to, we as the people of, of Emosil Bay, I named the fair five of them, I already mentioned them. And last year, the committee of Emosil Bay, you visited them there as the committee to try and resolve their conflict with Petro SA. Instead of resolving that issue, you left us in a bigger fight with Petro SA after you left. The people of, of Emosil Bay were in havoc because of Petro SA. And furthermore, there was a case that we opened with the hawks, which the hawks were investigating, but Petro SA brought over that case. The person that we're banking on would be leading that particular case was bribed by Petro SA. They offered that young person a job. And furthermore, what is happening in Emosil Bay, if you are a woman, you need to get a job from Petro SA, you need to exchange that with sex. If you are a man, you need to pay a certain amount of money. That is what is happening in Emosil Bay. So we really wish that you can assist us, that Petro SA must work in a way that will benefit the locals. We, the people of Emosil Bay, we are not happy at all with what Petro SA is dealing, is doing at Emosil Bay. Thank you.
Alma Raponi. Agroth ama, kom orei ten wada. Die regira, os plaslege communities alma. Mijn naam is Hendrik Phillips. Ek is van die gemeenschap Protea Pak, Rousmornan, die Anaka. Ek wil i net se, iwe die probleme gehoor. Iwe die gaail van die volk gehoor. Ni ma sken kandagda ani. Iwe die vogane wat ga gebeur, as wat ons a rees wet. Petro SA zal osteen op die vogane voorwaarts. Kom terug naar die gemeenschap toe. Kom geself met die gemeenschap team. Gemeenschap wet wat die nou house is. Ons word nooit geconsulteer. En is jammer met vermoordse se, kom ik verwies net naar die klering gemeenschap in ons gebiede. Ons word tot en al word ons geignorer. Ons word nie respecteer nie, een enige project angepaard hoor. Iwe, as ons die voordeel kan hit, ba dik wet nie hoe komi. Ons word altijd in die ater kan geëselt ons chiefs, sedes ons gemeenschap, huilsel ons gemeenschapie. Maar ons word alwee voet word ons getrap. Alle praat van onge, onge, omgevend bewasai, ek kan i ba je uitwies. Ons word nou nie herkeni. Ons zei nou ja, da ga die regira je vanaf terug. Kom je terug, da word die ding geïmplementeer. Verwies i na Legunbe. Da is Legunbe was afgekeer, six honderd weersgewendeere. Was afgekeer Legunbe. Hoe kom, iwe ons sit met die sille kom, ons sit met dubbel sandaad. Kom ons gang kik naar die gemeenschap, even die dam. Daie gemeenschap was nooit geconsulteer. Ons het gaarkom, ons probeer my project te stiel. Ons het getoet, weet i wat die, ene van die dokter, ons vraag se je gemeen, ons mensen broekje, duvart die a louw brood en hij brek hem op en brok je sestikke. Hij zegt, had hier helle gemeenschap, zeg, ek broek hier. Zo word ons verneder. Ek wil nie naam noemie, wan i we, ons word met ons ora politik gespeel. Met ons word politik gespeel. To Legunbe afgeskiit word, wat gebeur to? Hellen zela kom uit die kapit. Si gaan hiel asie mol op hiel asie N2, gaan klip se en lint, for destiny of Africa. Dit is die foofie ten Legunbe, ons word poet gesini. Vandaag wat gebeur nou? Vandaag word die sille project goed gekier bij die dam, bij die Garden Roet dam. Wenner roet desi, to die de droogte, set weener, geze, is de dertig, is de nan. Gradeer die dam op, maak hem groter, skief helle pomp, daam meer water kan kom. Die zei, ons kan die, kan ons nie gavam, maak daar krieie dertig miljoen. Dat is nie alne. Ons sit hier bijte met een project wat genoemd word Go George. Das ons kopst hier word ons mensen. Ek was een van die onderhandelaan in Go George. Ek was uitgetrap. Ek was uitgestoet. To ek in Amerika, ek kom toore, hier tima, weet i, hieri beste wat ie van bijtelop, was voor onestemde dat voordeel van ons gemeenschap te wies. Daar is nie een, nie een tekstie van die klering wat die bijtelop, wat er houtet. Nee nie. Maar gelukkig was van die mensen van Temoleto wakker. En onweerde ze mensen die net ingegeenie. Alweer ingegeenie, helle sit met le pommete. Maar nou kijk je pakels topsit, helle grote, kijk blankkoop, zie grote, kijk paak din, kijk Rousmok, kijk alie gebiede, das nie eenie. Iwe, jij word so geman agenie ene van die dag, dat jou deelname, ek pas persoonlijk onefening, wan dat was my deelname. Si er 2004, ba de woorniandel, van hieri bestiis. Hij is nou, hij was voor onestemme, oma holding company. Weet i hoeveel dichene weersgewende ons verloor? Weet i hoeveel miljoenen aanse tende te ete komi? Ek wil, ek wil terug sit ba, ek wil iwe die vogane wies. Si nie wat het ek hier in mijn hand. Hier er ik twee hogere zon bevela. Een van George moesta. Die een van George, uh, WJ Lou, weet i, hieri orders word nie uitgevoerdie. Maar as ek terug kik, ek zie die president, gewese president, uh, Zuma, was togesluit voor Contum of Court. Nou, hoe kom kan dit nie hier gebeurie? Die sit ons gemeenschap. Die beste stend dieuste. En ons het onderhandel om die beste gekreed, wat die goedkopst is sal wies. Die goedst is sal swort. Vandaag is die beste dieuster, as die dag. Weet i as daadi mensen net kon doen is, dat van die begina, beplan was, het nie een in George warke. Hiel in die sidkaps ook nie een swart gekreed. Jelen in die sidkaps ook nie ein swart gekreeg. Want daar was, die directeer, waar mensen zien dat hij beste, reinie best. En de zien dat hij MTG, dat hij pressin pokers daar. Alle weet i waarvoor hij pressin pokers daar isie. Waar hij pressin pokers was, dat die directeer moet uitgaan. Alle moet checkers pikempey alma, dat die mensen moet lagaan. Alle moet daar eventjes wat hier bijte gegever, nok gedrop gewoewa. Alle moeten daar insit, zo dat as die posisie in die beste, dat kijk je naar al die specials wat daar is. Weet i wat nou verhoedet wat die best ver op is. Ek had die competition tribunal, het gaan praat, plus minus vier jaar terug. Ek het tot vandaag nie antwoord gekurie nie. Tot vandaag nie aan, my pimmetje was amel gekanssemier. Roet is wel, is longdes, zaklet, amel. Omdat ek derv, gederv gedunet om die nie gabe moet op te treg. Die ende van die dag, ek drie jaar terug gaan naar die register op een prada. Toen ik terugkom, feilderna, toer word ik me opgeteld die die speakers. Eerste were die speakers, ek maak my fak me, maar later is i die voorzitter, maar hij verenegaan. Hij se, ek se ek se ek me, ek ga jou een vraag vraag. En as jy my, jemoeit zorgvoudig dan, voordie hieri vraag antwoord. As jy uit die voorzitter, se ja. Alle vat my de afana, pori stasi toe, en alle opslip me op op die ware. Zo laat ons necht stand bij een punt, en laat ons teruggaan en consulteer met die gemeenschap. Baie dankie.
G'day, my name is Hendrick Phillips. I would like to greet government, the community, everyone present. You've heard the cries of our people, and we are tired of our people not being respected. We are tired of our people being used to play politics with. You can see where our community is, we are not being benefited. Other communities are benefited, but ours keeps getting neglected. I have seen how high court orders being issued are also not being adhered to. And I'm wondering if the president can be arrested for being in contempt. Why people who are in contempt of these court orders are not being held in contempt? I have also been withheld from opportunities because I acted against the government who has been ignoring and neglecting our people. Chair, unfortunately, the interpreter could not hear the conclusion of the speech.
Huiemora ama, huiemora al die parlemens, mensen jake gemeenschapleier wat die is. Onz het vermore gekoom. I weet wat soortel leerstelling is. 1994, het ons amel gestem voor een bitter lewe, bitter weersgeleendide. Ek wil ook niet noem. In die eerste plek, ons moet weg met BEE. Want BEE is die grootste gemors wat nog plas gevintet. Ja. En die companies wat van oor seer afkom, om i te kom dral, onze mensen van di baat bij ditie. Want oor alle gaan dit niet oor geld, geld mag wat de leid. Onzes in Mussel Bay is een vissere gemeenschap. Nou wordt dat gedral, die viss gaan weg, die weersgeleendide raak minder in Mussel Bay. As je opportunities voor onze mensen nie daar, is een opleidingskool. Die see, oh, wie van baat bij dit, en de provinces, de mensen, de kinders van baat bij daar opleiding. En my pleidoe is vermodag, vermore is, geer die mensen die rechte skills training om te werken die vlak wat dit nou gaan in beweg. En moet die een autodomswe perk verbonden aan maakie. Want mensen wat veertacht plus is, is waar je beter als die jong mensen, en alles meer veranwoordelijker als die jong mensen. En etavas nie bij roerel arias meetings, goh die plaatsen nie. Nie eerst bij ons in die gemeenschap saal was meetings, en dia meiden tar kanie. My pleidoe is, nou gaan nie baa. Big fires, die big fishes gaat nou weer die community intrek. Das ampeshus met die casino gewees, onze mensen di baat geven bij die casino nie. Zo my pleidoe is as a blief, geer die mensen die nodige opleiding, die skills trainings, laat helle bewegen naai vierten. En vermodagse meetings gaan weer al die skelms weer aanwees, wat die onze mensen voorvoordeelie. Amel gaan weer vermodag aanwees, want alle kik kiks aan die gemeenschap en die om lichende gebiede voor die plasmenses, de kinders voor werkenie. Baie dankie.
G'day afternoon to the parliament and the community. You know, in 1994, we voted for better lives and better job opportunities. But unfortunately, that is not the case at the moment. My first point that I would like to make is that government should do away with BEE. BEE is the biggest load of nonsense I've ever seen in my life. Also, foreign companies coming to drill in our coastlines are only to the benefit of themselves. It does not benefit our communities. The Mussel Bay area is predominantly a fishing community, and our resources are being depleted with all the drilling happening as well. We need skills training in our areas to equip people to be skilled for the current trajectory the economy in the Mussel Bay area is heading towards. And having a limit of 40 years, of the age limit of 40 years, is preventing people who are skilled and capable of also accessing these opportunities and being skilled. Big fishing companies are probably coming to say that they want to include the community, but it will not, it will not benefit the people of my field at all. We need skills training and opportunities. Again, also criminals will be attending these meetings and they will be withholding opportunities from our communities. Thank you.
Yes, good morning to everyone and all protocols observed. I'm not gonna be wasting time. We are here because of the upstream petroleum resource development bill. And we are here because we want to give our views on it. I'm Leslie Lungile Tofu. I'm residing in Mussel Bay. I've got a house here in George, and I work in Mussel Bay. I'm a pastor by calling. And there's a verse that is in the Bible. It says, "My people, they perish because of the lack of knowledge." It becomes very much critical that whenever we attend anything, we must stick to the point and straight to the point. We are here for the bill. And this bill, if I can remind the chairperson, it comes because we as the unions in Petro SA, being sepalsold, darite, nomsa, we met Minister Quete Mandash on the 17th of January 2019. We said, "It is not acceptable that the country will only own 10% of its own resources." We said the country, we said the country must be given 20%, and they said there was no bill. Minister Quete Mandash committed that he will try and have the bill formulated. And today we are here because of that bill. One of the things that we'll say from the unions of Petro SA as well as from the community of Mussel Bay, we support the bill because the bill, it is there to protect the country. It is there to protect Petro SA. It is there to protect the resources within the country. Let me give you this background. Government used to drill through Sukow and processing the gas and condensate through Moss Gas. Government was owning that process. When it comes to 1999, 2002, there was a formation of Petro SA. And then some of these blocks and wells were sold, like the Bropada and Lipard, that were taken currently by Total. What is it that government is left with? It's only 10%. And we said it cannot be. Government must own at least 20%. What is the problem with South Africa? We are a third world country. We do not have resources to drill. We do not have resources to make sure that we develop these wells. We might need some partners, investors to come. If we do not have that money, we say at least government must get something through this bill. Hence, we as the community of Mussel Bay and the unions in Petro SA, we support the bill. We support without any doubt because it is our initiatives to say there must be this bill as to protect Petro SA. Maybe some of you do not know. Currently, Shell and BP have stopped refining in the country. Why? Because we've been solely dependent on them. We are currently having Sasol producing in the country. Petro SA is not producing because of the lack of resources, which is the fish stock. When government has got a hand through the 20% in whatsoever that Total is finding in the sea, that will mean that can be processed through the national oil company, which is Petro SA or whatsoever company that will be formed, as we understand the cabinet has approved the measure of IGAS, SFF and Petro SA to form a national oil company. Therefore, we are viewing this bill as a progressive step to make sure that government owns something in our seas. What, let me also go to point number two. It is very strange, Chairperson, that in the likes of the Bropada wells and Lapard, you will see the unions owning 10% and private individuals owning 10%. And the state through Pasa owns only 10%. And hence we said, it cannot be the case. Government must own at least 20%. Then those partners can sell their own share, at least 20% must be owned by government. As things stands with Total deal, Bropada and Lipard, government is only owning 10%. The other 10% is for the other union and the other private individuals. Which should not be the case because we are losing as a country. However, Chairperson, we want to record it that this bill, when we read it, it speaks to social labor plan in referring it to MPRDA. We are of the view that the social labor plan for this bill must be defined properly on the bill itself, not linked to MPRDA. Why? Because there are gaps that are in that social labor plan in that one. For example, Chairperson, in that social labor plan, it says minister must only be informed if the company is retrenching more than 500 employees. So which means these companies can come and operate in our upstream environment and retrench as long they are retrenching less than 500, they do not need to inform the minister. As long as they are still giving VSPs, early retirements and packages, they still do not need to inform the minister. These are things that needs to be corrected in terms of social labor plan. Hence, we say it cannot be linked to MPRDA because that one already has got gaps. Many people in Mussel Bay and many people in South Africa have been retrenched under that social labor plan without informing the minister. The minister wakes up far too late. The last one. The social labor plan of MPRDA is not very clear on the benefit of the hosting community. We need a percentage for the hosting community. If we are talking that these drillings will be taking place within our environment, and I think I must clear the air, when we talk of drillings, we're talking about drillings about 80 kilometers into the sea. Fishermen don't go as far as that. Let that be clear. And let us understand that fishermen don't go as far as 80 kilometers, 120 kilometers into the sea, where currently FA platform is placed. But the hosting communities must have a certain percentage, that must be attached to the bill, even if it's through a form of a trust, so that that percentage will benefit and help and develop our communities. We have seen this thing, Chairperson. Where I'm coming from, I'm coming from Eastern Cape, Transkye, in Willow Vale. In Willow Vale, there's a nature reserve, they're called Duesa Nature Reserve. It's under ECPTA. That nature reserve was given to the community by former president, former president, deputy president then, Mr. Jacob Zuma in 2001. When he gave that to the community, they said then, the ECPTA is renting from the community. They were paid 21 million rand, the community. And they formed a trust where all the man that were benefiting because of the land that was used, then it goes to that trust, and that trust was meant to benefit the communities around. And hence we are saying, there must be something like that in the bill that will benefit the communities within the surrounding area or the hosting community as to make sure that people benefit. It's not become certain individuals that benefit, but it becomes the entire community, which will be governed through a proper trust. Thank you so much, Chairperson.
Thank you. G'day morning, Chairperson, g'day morning to the house at large. My name is Wee Tsoazu.
Thank you very much. So I only have two questions. Unlike the previous speaker, I'm not so well acquainted with the bill. And I feel that I'm not the only one, there's some of us who have just come into contact with this this morning. Therefore, the question I have is, is there a period given in order for us to familiarize ourselves with the bill before we can give our view of whether we are for or against it? The second one being, as the summary was given, one of the statements that stood out for me, quote being, "When the bill comes into effect." Now that raises a question for me to say, are these gatherings just to twig the bill as is? Is it going to pass, given the statement of when the bill comes into effect? Are we saying that these gatherings are just here to twig whether it's for or not for? Thank you very much.
We are, we are not, we are not really prepared for that. Yes, we are still trying to, to talk to the members of the committee as well. Just by way of, talking about potential issues. Why? What is the workday or the working exercise? We are seeing if and when after such a sample comes for the team of this meeting, the bill might be, might not be, depending upon what is discussed or what is for one part. And the people, they are still here to discuss the document, to share the differences and the issues. We are the second part. And I see that here is, it means we are still with us. Let us get to the last 10, who from their first experience, I'm reducing the five to three. So we have the gentleman who has been standing. Yes, 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 sir. The gentleman, the, I only see gentlemen this side, I don't see ladies. No, no, the gentleman with the paper. Yeah, yeah, yeah. You will be noted, don't worry, don't worry. The lady, there was a lady who was standing there. And the lady with the duck. The gentleman with the scotch shirt. Oh, you want to sit down? Okay, it's your problem. The gentleman there with the cap. Yes, sir. The lady with the glasses and the gentleman with the red shirt, red t-shirt. How many do we have here? And the lady with the glasses. Are we fine? We are still needing four. Now, we are, we are, don't worry. Let us see how our three minutes work here. You will get your chance, we are here for you. It's three minutes, three minutes each. Unlike the previous round, when we just jump the three minutes, then I will have to request you to wrap up or get, I'm going to be madam speaker now. You can start, sir.
Eka malam, di gulula mile class, nde puma epi to, epletin pekpey, eh, what six? Mchaleka pambi, anfunu okokbana, ndikriti ekasalako. Kuba, yazi kwa lta shasikulo sinengagi, yokokbana sitisizewa izindo, but ufumanse kindo bana kunabantu abapusha i political agendas. Apoko naba Monday, twé, okokbana banga, baba kriti. Although there are people that are suffering outside. Up on this akona, Chepasi, we are facing a problem in South Africa, whereby we have fumane suba, i unemployment rate is too high. People are dying. And even, esmundo enze, tu besi kuisona, kuisona akondo ipu tukleyo, ebesi fumane nengi, ye confusion etalwe by the same political leaders. Now si tinga, kengo okokbana, kaisisa le bill, iso utetaka kuluna atiti na bantu, abakukround level, abakupekayo, the poor of the poorest. This is kumeke ti ke, Chepasi. Nandi ya isapota, hundred percent, indo ibitetwa, ngupasta, ebe sandasukapa yaye, anfunu pindapinda, indo ekati layo. Siya isapota i bill, yaye saisapota ne statement, ebe smeka, upastha, ilendo nati sipeteos sukana yo, epi to. Kotwa, kendi keli ndwaye nyepifondi ishe, sanu fumela. Okokbana, kuna point oise izleyo, mchaleka pambi, eti, ye ipi indo ekfunega yenziwe, kasi fumene lenatigasizimbiwa. Bubutoki no bubuvu obo izimbiwasfunyenwe. Kuba besela ngapambili, ziko ni company, ezi zileyo kuti. I think the past three months, besitlino engine, e no engine, uvumile okokbana, skon izimbiwa. Kutia tu kuti leno si zeleyo apa, si zele indo e pilayo. Yaye siya itela okokbana, ufulmende, si singa baxali and si community, siya fumela nangayo, siyamba nayo, asnangagi nayo, kuba silambile. It's been a long time, Chepasi, whereby you see sa i bill, but you will only find out, the only people that are benefit are the people from outside. Although ti na apa inside, there's nothing, ye si fumana. We need a favor and we need you to pass this message to the parliament. If the poor of the poorest are assist to, manse, but there's a project that is running, we will go out to the street and do it to you to make sure that our benefits are coming to us. Thank you, Chepasi.
I am Lulamile Class from what six, Bitou, in Petting Bay Bay. Thank you, Chepasi, and the committee for the opportunity. I don't want to waste your time, but we have a problem here of people who are coming here in these meetings after being spunfared to come with political agenda to try and derail this process. So, Chepasi, please don't entertain such people. And furthermore, in South Africa, we have a problem of unemployment. And unemployment in South Africa is very high. Some of us attended SONA, but there was nothing that benefited us from what we had on SONA due to political leaders who gave people these certain expectations and ideas. Those are people, are the very people who also disrupt these kinds of meetings. Furthermore, Chepasi, this bill talks to us, the poor of the poorest. This bill is talking to us, it's there to assist us. We support this bill and the statement made by the pastor, one of the speakers who spoke at length before me here. So we support the statement that he made. We as the community support you as the members of parliament and government, we are behind you. Don't be afraid when you have to do what is right. In the past three months, engine spoke to us and that made me to come back to you to say, let us not be told lies by saying there are no minerals. Engine disclosed to us that there are minerals, they have found that there are minerals. Therefore, the outcome of this bill might lead to certain projects. Those projects must benefit the poorest of the poor. We are behind you. We don't want this bill also to be one of those that benefit people who are coming from other countries or foreign people. And yet we, the locals, we don't benefit anything. We support you, we are behind you. I thank you.
I put danki seve di komitee, vohgeldi kes, Joni Fasariyantus, Gemeenschkap Aktivis, wakwir verreg in gerechtigkeit, en vau vau ons, erste Nazi-mensia, that's a misgekik word. I've been dealing with vohgeldi ons belastung gialt moors, sozwa de protokol is, in regierung en in municipalite. In eerste plake, we will vewis na 5.3. Now, my prayer is okay in regierung prayer, and vewis na koi otsan, te waila ons e rektag, aler kenengi ne. Alle gani home affairs do, and la ma kriji dokumente, and di wet ons in schoolen, vaa ansu kumutan vili. Van, ook alle dokumente is het zwart en wit. Ons is wit zwart en wit die. Ons veler ken word ni net op zilke kamaplas papieren. En nogal wil ona ons, as i eerste Nazi-polkri, janpa rivi, janpa rivi ketho, slanko me kri kri. En trotirawa as me kri, dere wit man. Das vamo ons slank like, sozwa ons like is so. Ons ei dis mut, hatse vesetramaposa. Ik tol ni mesaki gankis se, eerste mut ebegembe home affairs. En ons ei dis e regma, oh, hoe kan ei vewach ons muti bil, support? Asa ani eerste bergsonkel, geowas ons. Hoe kan ei? Hoe kan ei? Alle areogan, alle stukvillig, anesos kijkt naar die parlement, asa wit en zwart. Alle lalige regier, alle vekier van ons. Ons muterang, anesos mutons mensen, mutos hat etukij, omelenama van ei tirola, muterang hal. As al ons os eerste reg, hanterang kri. Ons, i koi en i san, i eerste Nazi, hi van zin Afrika, wat kan ni meer tola? Da di zin Afrikans regierung, voo ons kon su kamaplas ni, alle moors ons belasten gial.
Can we just give the gentleman, we, Chepasi, a chance? I see he's preparing himself for...
My name is Joni Fasariyantus, and I want to say good morning and thank the committee for being here. Firstly, I want to say that our community has to fight for justice, especially when it comes to the First Nation. I see all of you here, but I see that this is another exercise in wasting our tax money as the government, the province and municipalities normally go into. Now I look at 5.3, and here under 5.3, I see the government mentioning something about koi and san. How can they do this if they haven't fixed our ID documents at Home Affairs here to read specifically what population group we belong to? Everything and everyone is not just black and white. We are the First Nation. And we look this way because when the whites reached our shores, our shores, our women were raped by them, and that is why we look like this. The point that I want to make here is, how can you expect us to say that we support or we don't support this proposed legislation if there's been no workshop where people would inform us about this bill so that we can make an informed decision? I also see government still speaks only about black and white, and I feel that the people of the First Nation should remove their names from the ANC role. What should happen first is that the First Nation should be recognized because we also fight taxes in this country. Thank you. Is it the ANC role or the IEC role?
Siya mulela ni kola, kodan ya korongo, san i kubelis, unaga girap. Ti nduwa se mosel pay, i wotkomite mosel pay, sikala ekako loani, kodak so luto, basikale loani. Kugiloki si paktwa ece si si kem, apo i baba, si suka kola, naba vasta ukalale, ukalukalale yo mogu, basuka ece si si kem. Unongaba, asla, kamasebe ece si kama. Kodam mosi kene ekako loani, kula lokisi ndala, awo utu inama sebe. Kabala lokisi ndala, ina history, ekako loani, sasi ka indo to loani, kaslambele, goku, niks, komplu nokai doa se loani. Kwangeta umos case, number one. Umos case wa kubegue, ebe ke, is for 30 years. Kotwa, eva four, five years, weta, katuwa Petro SA. No kumos case, nebe shoot about, nebe kwe ni pas, nebe opetixi onki indo, kodakatu Petro SA, zapetisi. Abanoana bafundi, akano utumtu, ukuas e mosel pay, kulep e mosel pay onke, kukumtana, o sebenza e moscase, akako. Why si yena benefit, ina weto? Asina yeye benefit, ye bo na ni gakana ni mogu, namda ne lakas, kamos case, kamos case, nebe ni kobo tudi, daba daba mshopi. Abasebenza ngelalo, weh namkosa, weh namkalati, o daluazi, awo ifumana opportunity. Awa fumani damam million, siye bu casino. I casino, ya fuyelu kuti, abanba se mosel pay, baza banep benefit. Lokisi ngani, ngelakas, ece si si kem, tarkati ame ida, kwanongaba, ina kasa, lokisi as. Kotwa, abafumananga, no luto, zanga kuba fuanesent, kutwa ya ni kubani, ya ni kubani, wai banga si kubaxali. Ni na si komite, si parlement, si ve, si fe. Ni se bandwi, ni kala kwa lokisi ndala, ni tute, ya mosel pay onke. Kababa bandua na mogu, bafunda uke, baku standa teni, abanam sebenzi, bayusa i trucks. Why abana unsebenzi? Ons zan Afrika, uvumela na mai Nigeria, basa utaysa bandoa ni tek, ifu cha ya mriki, kababukopika, kukilisi, kubebufundisi, kodak luto. Si se ekako loani, nekumbelatina, abase ekako loani, si riti pabla kwa lakaka, si riti kanongaba, kodak akonto i choyo, basi banga ngapambi. Balani, nibakale, usina ngaposa, kabae, we si ngaposa, usina ngaposa, asa bandwi, aso na ni parlement, zanu fumaje, kutwa ya ni pa bandwi. Kodakina basi banga ngapambi, alis baba bandu, basapata sa, yupa, kua za lokisi, inbo.
Whilst the interpreter is coming forward, I think we've got about seven, eight people who are still coming through. I'm repeating what I repeated before. Don't deprive yourself an opportunity to make inputs into this bill that you are talking about. All the things that you are saying, 100% true. But I don't want you to be like that other person who cried at a different funeral from their family's funeral by mistake. So I'm requesting that the public meetings that deal with pertinent issues of your unemployment, which is correct, of your issues with different companies, is correct, at the right platforms. Now you might deprive somebody when time has come for us to close, who would have wanted to say something pertinent to the bill? And then that person would have taken his five or three minutes by discussing the issues that are very important to you but not on the bill. What might happen is that when we go to another province in Limpo Po, in Mpumalanga, they might talk about specifics of that bill, of this bill, and decisions might be taken on the basis of their input whilst you have deprived yourself of that type of input.
or coming from a kingdom. Either I might not be born by a politician, I am a descendant that bears knowledge of African indigenous knowledge at school I passed that at five. Now, if the portfolio committee with South Africans wants objective participation in matters of economy of this country, we need to be straightforward, call a spoon a spoon. Starting with the system that leads indigenous African to behave in this nature today, in this hearing of views. The First Nation should be leading the rest of the nation they gave birth to into unity, not come and separate them, claim who they are while they are separating themselves from the rest of their continent. It is the work of the self-appointed people from the Western countries in Europe who decided that their ideology based on a philosophy of one individual will after four hundred and ninety years or eighty years create dispute amongst the African children not to be able to make objective input on issues of the economy, including the resources of this continent. You as the First Nation, you could stand up and unite the African continent. You as politician, give us full capacity in order we are well educated on these matters, so that when you call upon us, we come here with objective opinions. People are raising issues that are angering them because the lack of knowledge on how to fully participate in these matters of energy and other sort of things. You have few people that bears knowledge, even the First Nation is backed up by a legal representative. What about us, who never got chance to go to school? We believe that get rid of the Western mentality. Because you know, you know, if African people can manage their own mineral resources, Western countries, Europe, will be ten times poorer than Africa is. The policies, the policies, it's Mr. Chaperson, the policies, Mr. Chaperson, and then were planned long time ago to lead us to this division. Miss, Miss Confusion, people are talking about reality. We should call King Charles from England to discuss how they corrupt reality in Africa. Today we here to discuss the energy, petroleum, gas and mining. That's why I'm here today. Our opinion is, yes, Peter has mentioned it, we support the document under one reason. You provide the necessary knowledge to our children. So in future, the First Nation, don't claim that they are not black people while they are more than black. So that, so that as, as united as well as Sub-Saharan region outside the community, we discuss and remain objective. We want these things. White people from overseas, Mr. Chaperson, this is what they do in blood. They invest money for their kids who come to South Africa to do research in our oceans. It's called Oka Foundation. Talk about tourism, that's what they support. Oka Foundation, while our own kids who are born in this region, they don't even know what the meaning of the word dolphin in Korsa. They don't know what exists in their ocean. So may this act, as we support it now, accommodate to empower our children to contribute objectively towards the development of the economy of the Sub-Saharan region. This country and this continent does not only belong to the First Nation. Yes, we know, Mr. Chaperson, we, we come from Central Africa. We are the descendant of Tenguni, but we came here and we fought battlers. We expected the First Nation to harbor us and show us how things are done by African native people. I'm start, I've started to write a book, it's my first book. It's called African Natives Within the Sub-Saharan Region. I'm trying to explain, Mr. Chaperson, that these are not politics. Here, the government, the people must come together to make sure we pave the way for the young people to be able not to look for jobs, but to become entrepreneur that will own companies, that will use this act, you know, to grow our communities again, your highnesses. And I think like my king who hails in Wilo Vilka Jani, we want to discuss reality, let's bring King Charles to explain to us how much gold have they taken to South Africa and how much of it they are willing to return for repatriation. We fought for this country not using tribalism, calabas. We fought this country as African people. We never even name our people back. It was just an ideology from West Europe. Chaperson, Chaperson, if I'm wrong, you correct me. You know, that's my closing statement, you know, the minute we put our hands in our own mineral resources, there's gonna be a cold war. It's based on facts. So I apologize for us dwelling around due to anger. It is because lack of information, lack of what capacity is leading us. These African children, stop fighting amongst yourselves. The West and Europe is taking your resources. You'll buy the gold ring with ten thousand next time. Thank you, Chaperson. Please, we need more education here. Thank you very much. Oh, my name again, my name, I'm even having a Scottish name here, come on guys, let's fix this thing. Kenneth is a Scottish name, eh? English, a man that makes English, Magaga is a Tenguni, gift of God. I am Kenneth Magaga, the descendant of the Tenguni, who was born in South Africa. I am black.
Thank, thank you, thank you.
You are black, remember you're black.
Thank you, uh, Kenneth, thank you, Kenneth. So please, uh, I, I, I requested that we must just honor time. Now, um, the long and short of Kenneth is that he supports under certain proviso. Um, but the basic historical background, I'm going to ask one of my colleagues sometime to bring him along so that he can educate the people around this very important issue of unity. But you are, you are welcome, uh. So no, so no, 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 no background.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you, Chair. Observe all protocol. Uh, my name is Marius Lien, uh, because I'm from Naizna. Uh, because I will buy a digital gears. Okay, thanks. I will buy a digital gears that I support the bill one hundred percent under one condition. It's, uh, training for our people because we don't contend of the necessary credentials. Secondly, uh, we are suffering a disadvantage of being in advantage. So the First Nations are saying that and said, the resources, maus didn't plan to upstreaming. So I will pray for the, for the committee and, uh, the Chair on the digital government to acknowledge the, uh, that there is buyer, where the bill support. Maus pray for, for training for us here. And spread out to us that able men's dealers from all upstreaming developments within our region. And spread that the HR process, buy a digital cover word in C radius. As in Musselby or George upstream word, that must be like the minister in Naizna. And, and we upstream in Musselby. And then there's another China, Japan, but they see we in way because we are suffering a disadvantage of being in advantage. And so they didn't do all that training and capacity. And, and spread out that the sum, that the get talent, the mathematics, patents to this bill would buy a clear gears, who owns the percentage can anspeak. Or is many percentage by a digital can speak. I, I guess, I guess, uh, I guess a brain man, uh, in my, in my, in my DNA and my genetica. So I, I can't speak namens who can in First Nations and Black see. My I can say that once what blind in the area and the radius where the, where the resources identify were, dear scientist, us might, us might one hundred percent digital benefit around to the sum what, what, what government can script, uh, patents to this bill. On set, on set, swart ge bemagla de kampen is, what the percentage would create, us can't it the worst, okay? On set, a high unemployment rate, what now must get crack. Uh, government would say percentage screen in the upstreaming development company might say percentage screen. From my counter, will I, will I clear gears? I will use my tribalism push of the platforms. When come politics, whether the platforms met, met, met colors and, and backgrounds. Us mit clear gears, us is here, um, the bill to support and that us can benefit in the process, eh? When us are not going to benefit. The queen is doing the worst, the, the deer's the diamant of a wolf. But she need wear a weapon out of the commie. But us is, us is, many reason is us digital. Many reason is us clear, that the song patents to the bill who owns the means of hand benefit, government can do, clear mark. Uh, us will um digital mark. Uh, Chair, bye, thank you. Bye, thank you, Chair.
Good day to the committee, my name is Marius Lien and I'm from Naizna. I just want to state it clearly from the outset that I support this bill one hundred percent. But there are two conditions, and that is training for our people and the disadvantage must be seen too. The First Nation said we have the resources, but not the training and the ability to move it upstream. What I'm asking for here is that there should be training, especially for our youth and the upstreaming in our area. And if I speak about area, I speak about specific areas where you find the mineral resource. Um, in a way, I don't want people from outside also to benefit there, but rather the local communities in that area. Something that will have to be, um, clarified pertains to the percentages, who gets what percentage, that, that should be made very clear. Um, I just want to say that I'm a brown person, so I'm not gonna speak for the First Nation or for blacks. But what I want to make clear is that the people who live in the area where this mineral resource has been identified by scientists, they should be the first people who benefit from this, um, mineral resource. The last point that I want to get here is, I want to say that in our area, there is a high unemployment rate. Um, so in a way, if a mineral resource is identified in our area, that should also help, um, bring down this unemployment rate. Again, I want to mention the clarification about the percentage that the government gets and the percentage that the company that comes to, um, see to these minerals, um, get it out of the ground for us, that they, their percentage must be identified too. Uh, here, I, I want to, I want to know clearly, how do we benefit? I mean, the queen died, there's a diamond in the crown. I wonder if she knows that that diamond came from Africa. But I want to know, and the government must make it very clear here, how we are gonna benefit, especially those in specific areas where these minerals are found. Thank you.
Um, good day, everyone. Um, I will need thank you for the good time, um, also my steam to la door. And I guess the names on some means, I guess Avril David. I play in a clean one, give me the in Pakels Dorf, Rose Dale, after a good leave, a Gominskap. So I guess for a day, so um, also my steam to la door, namens on the Gominskap. I come the politic, right? First of black, the after ground, I can, I, I, I understand the ball of the constitution one hundred percent. That is also good, but I can't me same steam. Um, I could be released by in point in the constitution is there, um, mineral in als de beskeren. As I pray for our means, our first, means in the land, our First Nation. As I could so can, oh, excuse, I can be key, it's an, and be key English, I guess, English, my proud Afrikaans. And I will any means with my best hand. Um, mineral, was given, as I'm way back to go, was here, the First Nation, was it on deck? He had gedwel op hier die, um, gronde in, in the land. As I could so can say, that was now in the kiss, was in the north, kaapka, one so forth, that he like go go. He like it on deck, he is later, he'd, means of and by to afgekomen, I can not need so sticky for the geschiedenis. Then Van Ribbik's means had gekomen, he had gesehen what uns means he'd. He like it on, uh, uns means on neem, um, that they're on kind of was. That's what on neem van dit, he had not the fiscal get ken, dit is a diamant, dit is steenkoel, dit is, dit is daai nee. So he was in the nearest lay, as I could so can say. The water was in the nearest lay, I give you, um, talk of tabak, give you a wine, manpoor, this states. And then fat, I die sticky, then I can, nevertheless, it was not get weird, what the value van die product of van die ding was nee, langst over die korte trek. Then will I pray for two point two. The state say, um, he is so, um, on some mineral to bewaar, nee? My play doy is van dag, and on the state. How op, um, on some mineral to voer by the land to. Ons means a benefit nie, van hier die mineral nee. That word outgevoerd, gaan land uit. That must ons, that ten deerste, many landen terugkoop, weer in die landen, om het hier te komen. It was electricity, petrol, um, gas, type type of clean, good, is ons word benadeel. Time van on kinder is voorbij. My play doy is van dag. Can ons, as a belief, on's First Nations, the uneducated van on's land, what ni met trik gedunne, ni what ni school gegan, ni can ons, hele te gemut kom, en hele educate over wat is die land, what is belangrijk voor die land, die mineral en so forth. I could say in the bill of rights. The First Nations mother ken word, um, in term of van mineral and so forth. Net international, die steenkoel, ons sikkel veskraklik met laut shedding. Ons means a word benadeel, das land and sand is deu, laut shedding, ice casta als pak op. Ons word geplunder, van die dieves zak op ons toe, as die kracht en goeders af is. Nevertheless, is it means a bine in die plant what verantwoordelijk is voor die, what gebeur daas? So let us open car to meet me car, spell, let us me car educate, um, ook terug te kom. As I could get, I give one hundred percent erkening, ook vraai ik dat, um, jele as a belief, on's means a First Nations, that on's one hundred percent can benefit van die resources. Um, I could gefraad dat ie, onze resources, onze minerals, so veel as mogelijk binnen die land au. And onze means educate, hele oply, hoe om zeker goed te doen, hoe om, um, te, hoe gaan ons te werk? He is ambassmanne of means a that can werk of die gebied. The last point is, drukte kom naar die tariebe toe, Musselby. Die aan de kant petrol is a, alles het voor jaren, zit le da. Zo ver het weer, dat is die kist trik, onz et verschillende municipale, um, dinges areas is so, net been, net Musselby benefit. In dam is da, and I druk, net Musselby benefit.
As you wrap up, because you have long past the three minutes.
I'm done. Thank you so much.
Good day to you, members of the committee. My name is Avril David. I live in Pakels Dorf in an area called Rose Dale. And I want to say that I want to speak on behalf of my community who are, who have been and who are disadvantaged, previously disadvantaged and advantaged now. Now, the points I want to make, number one is that the constitution is supposed to protect our mineral rights. And the second point is the First Nation, when they moved up and down the area that they are known for on the coast, up Northern Cape and whatever other areas they moved, there were lots of minerals that they found as they moved around. But they did not know what the value of this was, it didn't have any value for them. Then the settlers came here with Jan Van Ribbik and they saw what our people had, and because the people lacked the knowledge of what they had, the value of what they had, they got the short end of the stick in trade. Two point two says that the state protects mineral resources. And of course, the point that I'm trying to make here is, we have these resources. We get these resources, but we do not beneficiate it in our country. Um, it leaves our country and we have to pay lots of money to get the part that had been beneficiated back to us again. What I'm asking for here is, um, can't our people do this? Can't they be taught to do this beneficiation themselves? And that is why the point that I'm mentioning here is that we have rights according to the Bill of Rights. And there are number of the people in our country who are uneducated and they don't know how to beneficiate these mineral resources that we have. And I would like them to be trained in a way educated, so that they know how to do this. Then I want to come to speak about coal. And we all know about the load shedding problems and struggles that we have. Because with load shedding, you have other problems because your electrical implements, the things that you use start giving in. And then when it's dark in our areas, then we get plundered and robbed by those who have, um, not the best interest of our communities at heart. We know that a lot of the problems they have at Eskom is because there are people who work there are causing the problems. But if I want to speak about the mineral resource in our country, I want to say that the First Nation are supposed to get hundred percent of the benefits of these minerals. But I want to say that our people should be educated about this. And if I want to speak about this one area, uh, Musselby, on the other side of petrol essay, it seems that only the people who live in that area gain anything from it. And that is where she ended the story. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my name is Ali, Ali Tia Baza, from Musselby, from an organization called Musselby Black Business Agenda. I'm also a community leader. Now, what I'm gonna do, eh, we support the bill, we support the bill. But what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna show blind spot, you know, in the bill, issues that I think you need to look at. That's what, that's what I'm gonna do. Now, eh, I've got a full bill here, eh, I'm gonna start, eh, before I do that, let, 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 let me give this small political, eh, some kind of philosophy. Politicians are elected by the public. And they, they go into parliament, eh, they are given public mandate. The, the voters enters into a social contact with politicians when they're in parliament. And the politicians in parliament takes a vow to say, we'll act on behalf of you, the citizens, the voters, will defend you, will develop policies that we believe are in your best interest, you know? That, that's the kind of vow that you take. Now, I want, I want to show those blind spots, given our knowledge, you know, of the evolution of this. Let's first deal with, eh, thirty-one. Thirty-one, I think that's the state, eh, that's the ten percent for participation of black persons in petroleum, right? Thirty-one, thirty-one subsection one talks about the ten percent that will be given for, for black participation. Now, can, can I, can I comment about that one? The first thing that I want to comment about that one, my understanding of that clause, that clause goes to BEE. That's what that clause says, you know? It's the same thing that happened in Total, where the main street, you know, a company led by Putum and Feggo got, eh, ten percent. Now, I think, I, I saw which people can listen to this one. I think our government must change the mentality now. We must change that mentality in as much as a business person, but this, he, he has become toxic now. What you need to do instead, eh, I think you, you, we must augment and come up with a principle, you know, that pushes equity and share, you know, to what is called Community Development Trust. Don't give the entire, don't give the entire ten percent sharing, you know, in, 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 in BE, in black business hands, don't do that. Because in the value chain of empowerment, there are lots of opportunities where black business can benefit. Now, in order to balance this, let me add something else. Let me add something else in, I think in thirty-four, section thirty-four. That is, that is where you indicated that the state will have twenty percent. That is wonderful, that is good. But that twenty percent is too low. It is too low, that twenty percent. Because you must remember, if you look at the definition of the state, the state, it's an entity that has a population. They've got boundaries, you know, they've got sovereignty, you know, they've, they've got independence. Now, the sea, the blocks under the sea, they belong to the state on our behalf. Why must the state only own a mere twenty percent? It's unacceptable. That, that must be pushed up a little bit, because it's gonna give the state an opportunity. Let's say if you push it to twenty-five, the state can take five percent and give it to Community Development Trust, where the exploration, exploration takes place. So that, that, that's my proposal in terms of that one. Then the, the second issue that I see, it's a blind spot here. Eh, let me go to, let me go to fifty-eight of the bill. Fifty-eight of the bill. The, the second issue is that empowerment, empowerment or national development objectives in the bill, I see them, they are too scattered. They are too scattered. For instance, you've got a section here where the minister is given authority, you know, to augment through a government gazette, blogs, that can be hundred percent. Also, when the, the license holder apply to develop or to mine, eh, they are told at, at, at production, they must come with a social and labor plan, that's what is here. But you see, my advice is, take the entire, what I can, what I can say, empowerment package. Put it in one kind of section and say, and say, acting on behalf of the state, you know, these are the empowerment objectives that will be achieved. List them there. There will be five percent that goes to a Community Development Trust. For instance, you can say that throughout the value chain, there will be supply chain, eh, opportunities of procurement, that will, that will be given to EME and USC, that are fifty-one percent black. that will, that will be given to EME and QSE, that are fifty-one percent black. You get them, organize everything together. If you do that, won't be found lost as communities, will know exactly what is our benefit here. So we support the bill, but it's just that, if you can tweak those issues of empowerment, the bill must not lean towards capital, the bill must lean towards the people, then the people will support it. Thank you.
Good morning, chairperson. My name is Henrico Kumutu. I'm from Ward Four in Otsong, Ward Committee member, and a revolutionist by trade. Yes, I come from the old school. I've had an opportunity to look into the bill, and I would like to highlight a few things. Some of it, the previous speaker has highlighted, but there, there are other things, or other angles, that I'd also like to highlight. In terms of the bill, as a developing country, I think we are pushing in the right direction, where we say that we want to govern our own resources. On the contrary, we should also remember that it is imperative, that we should not overlook what we have promised to the people. And what we have promised to the people since nineteen ninety-four is that the people shall govern. So we will listen to the people, what the people expect. Now, in the bill and preamble to the bill, or to the proposed bill, it is, it is clearly defined what government's position is, and our government will protect in the industry. It is also clearly defined, our third parties will have access to the resources, but it is not so clearly defined how the people of this country will benefit from the resources that is going to be mined or extracted. It should be clearly defined in the bill, I mean, think you should go back. I do support the bill, but you should go back and clearly define to us, what are you going to do as a government to make sure that the people closest to the resources will benefit. In terms of resources, we know that we are a country that don't have all the resources to extract, or all the infrastructure, to extract these resources, but we should stop to depend on the West. Why do we have BRICS partners? Are they not in a position to help us? Are we overlooking something? We have Brasilia, we have Russia, we have India, we have China, and South Africa collaborating together. We should look at means and ways through BRICS to, 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 to close the gaps so that there can be more empowerment to the people of South Africa, and that we should not, we should not give our, our, our percentages away, like, for example, ten percent for our government. It's our resources. Why should we, if, if we can work through BRICS and get a greater percentage to keep for the people of South Africa, then we have made progress in terms of the developmental mandate. Yes, I've seen that there's a ten percent for government, but if you look, eh, section thirty-one and thirty-two, read it, read together with forty-three, forty-five, forty-four and forty-five. You see, there, there will be an opportunity for black people. I don't know if it's gonna be in the same fashion like the fish quotas, where we give you the fish quota and you collaborate with other companies with infrastructure, and then you take a percentage. There, they see that the black person will get thirty percent, or not less than thirty percent, but you must remember, if government don't even have the infrastructure, how, where, how should we as, as a business, eh, people, who should we negotiate with in terms of these contracts? Applying for licenses, get the license, then you must, eh, eh, you must submit all this environmental assessment stuff and everything. We just want plainly to benefit from our resources. Because if the government don't have the infrastructure, where are we going to get the infrastructure, or the capacity, or the power to negotiate with these big companies? We'd like to see a further thing that is currently happening in South Africa in terms of this proposed bill. We see that in all other, in all other developmental matters, or, or, or streams, or mediums, we see that there's only provision is made for the youth, sixteen to thirty-five, in that age cohort. Then we see there's a great emphasis on women development and we support it, but the age cohort between thirty-six and fifty-five are left behind. There's nothing for us, though we have the experience. And this bill should also, eh, this proposed bill should address, they can't forget us because we have the experience. We, 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 we also have life experience, and we should also benefit from, from the, from the, eh, eh, resources of this country. Yes, we, we, we see that there's gonna be like a petroleum agency of South Africa, there's going to be, sorry, eh, a PDEC, eh, eh, say PDEC committee, but we don't see structures for community. There must also be committees inside the act. There must be community structures, and the people must be appointed in a particular community, and it must be monitored so that the dispersion of the, of the resources, or the financial resources, be equal to all people of that, of that communities. We'd like to see, eh, our government to, to grow in this process. We are grateful to see this, this bill, because this is in the right direction. I know that we have all other, other, eh, eh, views of the bill, but for me as a revolutionist, I love this, I love what I see, and we're heading in the right, right direction. Thank you.
Eh, it's hundred and sixty years plus hundred and seventy years. Eh, is hundred and sixty years plus hundred and seventy years. Umsebenzi ozobe, ukutwa, ulak, 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 kesi zabi sombuapa. Hundred and sixty to hundred and seventy years. Itikelo ndo yingebo, ubantu abanongele ndao. Ubantu boonge, general worker. Business. Abantu be skills. Abanganasizkilzi, siyakela. Kubekui trainings. Ungatuama godatwa umtungapembumalanga. Okanye, eh, 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 kapoka yehauti, n'dezunzekel. Funake kutrainwe abantu benkinga bazawakazu kamla. Si namandomba za, namanglingu. Umtunge ngaya meko esenjinu. Yobanga pangelwenjinu. Akbele umtu etanda, nanomtomtala kuyegoba ifuna itendrant, which is not good. Okwesmini. Uko lendele grant eh three fifty. Umtana twalise abanduana abay five, six engine, ibe eight ya ke inglingu, yenganga ndoba ucho ngabe kweza three fifty, ngoba ku kumsebenz. I think our lekes isayo. Japanese situation city masi, masi, masi be kizimbo zetu, my, my kwanu iswe. Wong umtu a benefit. Abanduana betu situnene nabe zinjinu. We twenty-five to thirty years, beksapo sumdani apumi ozmela. Hake akakwazoo puma ozmela epangela, kwa ba kumsebenz. Situnane zinjinu. Zinzindo ke ezo, ekfunke nizuru recognize. Eh. Honor business also. Funake be kamlele. Wonge umtu. General worker, skill worker, ndyakela, goku zitoba. Andu zuba mte kanga ko, because antfunu pakaz. Difumba ez mto zitate, zibekliye. Abanduana betu situnene nabe, antfunu ipinda, situnene nabo ez zinjinu. Azala, bestala ez ikwinjwe one, ufor, uforums. Si ba tattoos, I mean si ba, si ba, si ba stainless, si ba stainless, si ba iten. Apinda abanduana bazale because kaluku umtuchonge ndoba ngaba ufunufumanitran ten fifty, azo kwa zupili. Inga pili si mtuki trant ten fifty, dyakela betu n'gos. Dyakasa, dyakasa ipil, folwen, dyakasa ipil, dyasupporta.
Eh. Greetings to the committee and fellow South Africans. My name is Nosi Pompikuwa. I am coming from Nice Na. I stand here to support the bill fully. Eh, the other concern that I have is that I would like the committee to recognize the people that have gathered here because they had to abandon their social programs in order to be part and parcel of this important occasion. Eh, the previous speaker also alluded to the fact that there is an office that is in Cape Town, but would like the office to be, to be closer to us so that we can also get knowledge and benefit from this. Eh, another issue that I want to put forward to the committee is the issue of unemployment amongst the youth. In my area, we've got a lot of youth who are unemployed. Eh, another issue is the issue of minerals, where they are extracted in places like Rastanpek, whereby the local community are given shares from such companies. We want that to also to be done in our area. Eh, we also want to be part and parcel of this exercise. Also, it is mentioned that this, eh, guest will be explored for seventy years. We want also to benefit from this process. Another important factor is the issue of skilling and training. We don't want people from Bumalanga and other provinces to get such training. We want our locals to get such training so that we can benefit. Another burning issue also is the burning issue of young girls who are unemployed and they resort to relationships with elderly people and that is destroying their lives. And they also bear many children, they produce many children and because they want to depend on this social grant of three fifty, we don't want that, we want employment opportunities. Eh, also in our places, who are living in big numbers, were concentrated. Therefore, I must also emphasize that we don't want our children to depend on social grant, we want work opportunities. I support the bill and I thank you.
No, um. I think up to so far, um, we are quite, um, happy with the inputs that, that we have been receiving. Um, and as a matter of principle that we said when we started, as soon as we have gathered what the ideas of the general public is and the people in the hall. Um, we are also making this point that, eh, this process is not exhaustive. As we have said, that we have, eh, eh, our support structures, support staff for purposes of further engagement. As we said, is the first province, we still have got nine provinces to go. Um, we've got to, we will be having a couple of weekends where we'll be crisscrossing. Now, the, you, you know that the human mind and patience is up to a certain level and to that effect, we have come to, to close, um, the submissions that we have been given. A number of them, um, are, as you have heard, repetitive and so on, but we appreciate them. We had agreed that there will be, um, about five minutes, not each, five minutes reserved for, eh, some closing. I've been made to understand that we've got the leadership of the area in terms of the mayor or, eh, and the traditional leadership. Amongst them, they will be sharing the five, strictly sharing the five minutes so that I can give over to the chairperson to make concluding remarks. Um, I know they have been discussing with our Ayanda boss and I would, if that consultation has been done, they can approach, eh, the mic so that you can have, eh, eh, direction. Have they decided, Ayanda? Oh. The leadership, we know that you don't just get into a place without recognizing this is our tradition, general. So we don't want to be, eh, accused. Eh, have they done that, eh? One. Mayor. Speaker. Going once. Twice. Thrice is gone. Now we go, we go to the traditional leadership with all respect. Um, for that I can also go in once, but I'm about to say that, they can approach the mic.
Thank you, sir. Eh, a good morning, Vorso Tren Komiteer. My name is Tuvere Jacobs. Vani gowikwais, Grootbraker Veer. Now, eh, eklofe daghi gowor. Eh, ungelaka, eteknodi di bali, di praat vani volledige bali. Ma eket gowor, datel woli bali ilik, eh, skyfamekaar. Di mineralen andani petro, di petro, ne? Ale mi wetsundwerb woli ilik ebiti skyfamekaar, ne? Now, as ek ne dinkan ni mineral. Eh, ons, eh, as di, eh, erste and ymse nasi. Et nog geen voordel gekriei uit die mineralen uit die. Dan praat ek vani mine, ne? Eh, ek weet vani stam di royal bafaking. Wat, wat voordel trek uit die mine uit. Darum ons vraa dat ons moet dealwees bij die voordelen van die mineralo, ne? Now kom ons bij di wetsundwerb. As ons kijk aan klosiele dri. Ons praat vani bewaarung. Now ons stim hunderd procent sam dat dame gekid word na die bewaarung. Voorhamaskin. Eh, eksploreer word, moet da gekid word na die bewaarung vani nater. Dan di volgende punt wat ons goworit, desposiele eh iinendertag. Eh, ilik mos gowor, di meeste van ons say dat alles stim isam miti tin procenti, ne? En dan nog ibenaming swart. Ne, daas a vraagteken, di tin procent van die swart, ne? Vival ana, eh, amma, eh, onda di tin procent van die swart, insu verstaanie, eh, as ons ok deela van. As ons dan deela van, afan gawees, dan say ons, da moed nog etin procent bijgeset wo. Daai is voor di eerste and ymse nasi. Dan di anderde is, bij di beilaattoe, ale say mos, di wetsundwerb ga na di nasionala, is van tradisioniele ler. Now ons wali, eh, ons is yinisika. As ons praat vani tradisioniele is, dat di kommentaar moet di gaan na di aise in i kaapi, o wat nou nabey di parlament is. Ma dit moet kom na di plakelans aise, zoos ons, iso, di atakwan, al i aise, dat moet di nato kom, fe besprekel, ne? Mai ander vraag is, mai ander vraag is net, di implementierens, eh, agen. Des mos nou petro Suid Afrika. Ons het bije, kommentaar gowor van petro Suid Afrika. Petro Suid Afrika et voor ons geval. Eh, ek hoi si person dat mosselbei kree voordel uit petro Suid Afrika, tesi di waari. Bij ons, eh, Grootbraker Veer, ons maak di dele vani stakeholdersi. Bij ons, eh, petro Suid Afrika et ghaaltgegeve yichka veer. Ma dit is voor di riitemense, ale besteer nou di yichka veer. Ale, fe billioneritele ghaaltgege, gemeenschap ghaal. Ale. Et di riefi, eh, bauhafo. Fe two million. Di wolwodans damasase ons kree geen, geen voordel uit die, saal vani projecto ke. Ne, darum. Da was a vesook gewees, dat ons kan i nou di bali, vada gavare, dit link na goeja bali. Paalwe nou daai, punta ons o erst bij mekaar moet kom. Of i'regierung zal moet ons erst bij mekaar kom. Ami laste vraag is, ek hoi, daas a vergadering nou na di trier bij obae. Now ons k'ni verstand, wat a vergadering is da, nog i, anisi vergadering na vada, baye ranke.
Before the, in, in, in Africa, um, normally what we do, and, and I think, maybe we were lost in some translation. Um, in the bill. The bill states clearly that apart from our deliberations, we are going to end up in the house of traditional leaders. Including the traditional leadership from the boy and the son. And such a bill will also be discussed in the National Council of Provinces, where, where provinces are also part and parcel of. Now, normally when we come through, we, we, we find a traditional setup where we would like to give respect to the traditional leadership and say, among the traditional leadership, one must come and say a word or two while having pertinent issues, but saying like the mayor would do and so on. We did not envisage that will be a, a number of other traditional leaders who might not be involved or related to. And, and on that note, I would insist, not propose that all other traditional leaders do that submission that we are doing with Ayanda, our, eh, secretariat, so that we, we, we kept, eh, we capture, eh, the issues. As, as I've said, it was a question of us knowing that the traditional leadership come as one and one of them will do that. But we are going now to be opening up when we are supposed to be closing. So we humbly request that the other submissions be given to, to Ayanda to process and it will definitely find a place in the house of traditional leadership where you would ventilate even more than the one minute we have given you and ventilate for hours on it from that point and it will be taken into consideration. We are still going to ventilate and discuss on it either way. So that, that will be my, 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 my submission and my apologies, eh, to the elders for making you stand up and go into the queue, eh, but I think that is the, the direction that you might take. The other important part is that you might find there are some small differences amongst yourselves as leaders from others and would not want to be drawn into such discussions to that effect. And I would give over to my chairperson, eh, with all that apology having been received by your good selves. Thank you, Chairperson.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Thank you, thank you, Chair. Good people, let me start here. We, we once went to a place, I won't mention the name. When you arrived there, the first problem we had was, um, why did you go there? Because that's not a traditional leader that you meet. Now, the normality of parliament in public meeting. That is why we made that, 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 the normality. We are supposed to get in here, continue with the public hearings, don't recognize anyone because to us, everyone is the same. The person who can give recognition is the speaker of the national accent because he is, she, she now build relations with stakeholders. But when we come to public hearing, we don't have stakeholders. We are got everyone equal. But what we usually do, because we can't pretend as if we don't know that. We then say, that's why I said, one, if the mayor was here, which is I, I would have appreciated, that even if it was the mayor or even the premier, which we go to a province, the premier is present, is sitting there. Because it might, it might be to us. But we can't ignore and pretend that there was no premier. But there is no way that you can have, even if there are four premiers, if the premier is amongst themselves or mayors that are present here, if they can't amongst themselves, stand up and say, thank you for coming here, we hear your input, but we think you need to do one, two, three. Now, we can't give each and every mayor to, to speak because we are now openly in meeting, we said we are closing. Some could, they can stand up now and say, but you ignored our heads. So why, why now are you continuing? So please, just understand that apology on our side. We can even be found guilty just by recognition. The second thing, I think my colleague has said, so, no, 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 not at all. You know, one thing I always tell people, if you invite me in your church, you have got the procedures that you run your church. I must follow the procedure. If, if you go to a meeting, you respect the procedures of that meeting. Now, we want now to, to also say to, to yourself. Next, next time, when a committee of parliament, whether it's the, the NCOP might come back, not us, because we'll process the bill. Now, if the NCOP comes here, let me make this appeal to yourself and probably advise other chairpersons. Concentrate on what that meeting is about. Let me tell you, you can say, and my colleague tried to explain, it's not that you are wrong, but the danger is that we can't, we can't, let me, as you said, eh, the last one was here. Eh. Kids don't have, our kids don't have education and all these things. The issue that you can't write that on, on the bill. We are not coming for a project, there is no project. We can't then say, this is, then kids must not have drugs. What, what is it that will talk about drugs in the bill? Now, the problem, there is someone amongst you who wants to talk to the bill. That person can't because you have occupied the space of him or her. So next time, I think myself, from where I'm sitting as a chair, next time I'll start with those who want to contribute in the bill. And then when time is ended, as soon as you stand up and say, we don't have houses, say, no, okay, you are in the wrong platform, sit down. Then, until I get someone who talks to the bill. Then, if we still have time, we can then come and listen to genuine concerns and grievances. But the danger is that when people amend this bill, when the people talk through this bill, they will even be talking for yourselves. And you come back and say, where did this be, where, where did this law, it's not a law, it's a bill. I heard someone saying, the reason is written twenty twenty-two. It's because it was initiated in twenty twenty-two. If this bill passes into law, even if it's in twenty twenty-four or whatever, it will reflect the date it became law. It's not a law now. That's why your inputs are important. So that, and I, I, let me repeat what I said, being a member of parliament is not a sign of intelligence. You are not, it's not wisdom, it's a show of hands. That's the only thing, there is no major criteria, it's a show of hands mostly. So please, when they come back again, and I think there is someone who said a very important thing, but let's listen to that. It's a debate, a discussion that we are having. One, we think we have to go back to change the rules of parliament. We may, we, we will have to go to our own parties to influence that process. That one, the departments themselves must conduct similar processes of public hearings before they refer a bill to parliament. Because now I feel like times were dying for things that are not ours. The questions that are being asked are supposed to be responded to by the department. The twenty percents and ten percent, they should be explaining to you why they make these proposals and how to that. I can't now because my colleagues here will ask me, where did you get that decision? Because we have not discussed this bill. So, so we think it's one of the recommendations. Two, I like what you said, we have to find a very effective way, even educating members of the public on how parliament works so that they could, they can appreciate the limitations that are there. I said to others, sometimes I get a sense people think that as a member of parliament, you just call each other and go to a meeting. No, you apply and when you apply, the house chair, the, the speaker, they approve. And you go according to yourselves as political parties represented in that group. So, if I like a member of the, you're a minister, you're a minister, you want them tomorrow, they'll be here. You will have. So it's not a question whether you want or you don't, you don't have a choice, you work according to what parliament says. That's what the rules unfortunately say. I can't come here as a chairperson in a committee because the committee will come back and say, who said, you must say what you said there. So please, I, I appeal to you lastly. Those who wanted, you are, even those who have spoken here, those who wanted to make submissions, unfortunately, that period of written submission is closed. But. Listen to English now. That's how sometimes good is English. Colonialism, fine. You can write to the committee. You take it as a correspondence. You can write to the committee and say, yes, we understand you came, you made us to, for public hearings and so forth. But we want to, when you deliberate on this bill, take into consideration the issues that I'm raising. As soon as we receive your correspondence, we'll send it to all eleven members of the committee so that when they come for deliberation, they are more armed with that knowledge that we've planted. That is allowed, we can reject a correspondence. But don't, don't say it's a submission, ne? You are just writing, making us aware, even concerns you have about the bill or what you want the bill to include. It will be up to those members that when they come for deliberation, they are more armed with the knowledge that you have submitted to them. With those words, thank you very much, the meeting stands adjourned.